Okay, I got six o'clock.
First chair.
We're now in session. First thing on the agenda is citizens' remarks and complaints.
Robert, Penn, what?
One, I don't know, it's been going on for about almost three years now. Steve R- Riggelman has been collecting cans and recyclables and refrigerators and TVs and stuff and storing them next to what used to be Mr. Rocco's house. And over those three years, we've had an abundance of mice starting to take over our little neighborhood here. And just this week, I saw rats in my backyard. So, that has to end. On top of that, it's like, it's really nasty looking at it, you know? It looks like hell. And if I should ever want to try to sell my house, I don't want it looking bad at a dump or recycling center. You know, like I said, just the cans alone, the liquid left over in the cans attracts mice and rodents and all kinds of stuff. And it's in a residential neighborhood. It's right there, it borders housing for crying out loud.
There's nothing there right now.
There isn't anything there right now, but they started putting up the privacy fence that you told me about. So, you know, even if there was a privacy fence, it would still be a health issue. We go through two buckets of mouse poison between my house and Mrs. McDowell's house.
Eric, can you do anything about that? Call John or somebody?
I'll call John and get John to come over and take a look at it.
We said there's nothing there right now.
There's nothing there right now. I mean, they finally stopped, but, you know, I want to make sure it stays stopped. I want the pallets that they've got out there that look like hell, like they're waiting for stuff to be stored upon. It'd be nice if that stuff went away too. But I want it to look like someone's yard. I don't want to open my door and leave garbage. It just...
We'll take a look at that tomorrow, right? See what you can do.
And the other thing was, I had a leak this winter in my house, which caused an exorbitant amount on my bill. And I don't know if you guys got this, but I put it in front of, to the secretary to give to the water commissioner regarding the credit to my bill in the amount of one sixty. And it was like, it was like over a two-month period where I didn't know it was leaking and...
When you got your first bill, did it go up?
Yeah, yeah. But I always wait. I mean, you're only allowed to do this once a year. And so I waited for two bills at least before I asked for this credit, because I didn't want to have to come back and say, well, this is part of that. I waited to make sure. And I paid my ba- because I only ever paid base amount fifty-eight, fifty-nine. That's all I've ever paid. And I've still been sending that in every month, so I figured by now, my account should, if that was approved, should have been cleared zero.
It was approved, then you had a cr- we did an adjustment of forty dollars on March the eighteenth. And your bill this month was back down to fifty-eight, fifty-nine.
It has been for...
We can't be responsible for the full amount though, since it was inside. But you was given a credit of forty dollars.
Yeah, right here, James.
Okay. But in the past, we've been able to get that completely reversed. When I was on the council, we did...
Not if it thought that the leak was inside the home. Invisible, invisible, where you didn't know you had a leak. Where was it really?
It was in my bathroom. It was in a toilet. It was draining, I couldn't see it. It wasn't like it was, you know, dripping through the ceiling or anything. It was a running toilet. The gasket went bad. And I didn't know it, because I don't use that to go to a bathroom. I have, you know, two. I use one.
Well, we can't take it all off, because it is on you. And we did that, took everybody's off, because they had a leak. We have to adjust it.
We always got ready to remember, if you remember, when it was in the vase, but nobody saw it, or it was in the ground.
Right.
But yours was right inside your residence.
Yeah, but you still couldn't see it. If it's a gasket that's leaking in the tank, you don't see it running. But it was running. I discovered it. It was like, shoot, huh, how long that's been going on?
It looks like December to me.
Yeah. But I fixed it right away.
Well, January's bill was still jacked up too.
Right. Like I said, it crossed over that two-month period, the end of December, early January.
Is that when we estimated it too?
We did the adjustment March the eighteenth after the council, when he sent that letter.
Well, we've already given, all we can do is give you an adjustment.
That's all I was asking for.
Well, that's what we got. She gave you a forty dollar adjustment on there.
That's what I was told. Well, prior, we used to be able to get the whole thing adjusted. It wasn't like I did it on purpose. It's not like I turned on a hose someplace and let it run for three days. That would have, I didn't see that being on me. But this was something I had no knowledge of. And anytime I have had a leak and found it, City Hall's always worked with me. It's happened a couple times.
Well, I can tell you, three, all we can do is give you the adjustment today. That's what we do for everybody else.
How much was over the adjustment of what the forty dollars?
He was asking for a hundred and sixty.
Over top of the forty?
No.
No.
No, the forty is...
Part of the...
It would have been, what, a hundred and twenty dollars over? Is that what this carried?
A little less. In December, his bill, when the, you know, when I guess it was first, found out it was leaking, was a hundred and fifty-four, twenty-five. He paid fifty-eight, fifty-nine. And then, January, his bill was a hundred and three sixty-nine, but he still only paid the fifty-eight, fifty-nine. And then, of course, there was penalties, because he was late. And after he sent that letter the first time, you guys discussed it, and it was decided that he couldn't get the whole thing done, because it was inside his house. I mean, and I was told to adjust it by a percentage, which was forty dollars.
Is that the way it's always been?
No.
It's the way it's been since I've been on.
Well, there's a leak that's inside your house, that you can see.
Because we used to do, you guys did one for me while I was on the council.
Not for your...
I had a water pipe inside the house, cracked, but it did it in the basement.
In the basement, where you couldn't see it, that's the difference.
You can't see inside a toilet tank either.
You can hear it running.
I, it wasn't, it didn't, it, the float would, it would lower, fill back up. Lower, fill back up. It was the seal at the bottom of the tank that it started leaking through.
Yes, that's not behind the wall or under the floor, that's all we're talking about.
But it's still not something you can readily see or hear.
Well, we gave you the adjustment, that's about all we can do, Robert.
Well, Dawn's the water commissioner. Pardon? She's the water commissioner. So...
We'll have to make payments on the, on the larger amount, then I can keep, you know, paying my regular monthly, but, you know, I'm on a very strict income. I don't have all kinds of money to draw in.
I understand that there's a lot of, like, it could be.
But I don't want to keep getting hit with late fees and all that stuff as well, you know?
Well, I guess if you do...
If he pays his fifty-eight, fifty-nine on time, he still gets late fees?
Well, because he still has the overdue balance.
But right now, I just got a check on the eighth, but he did have a five dollars and seventy-four dollar late fee, because that was actually for last month. This month, he was charged fifty-eight, fifty-nine. And his balance came down to one twenty-four ninety-four with this month's bill.
Well, as long as he pays over the fifty-eight, fifty-nine.
Right now, what's past you is one twenty-four ninety-four. And if you agree, I mean, we can do an installment agreement. I'm not doing it tonight, you can come in tomorrow. But I can set you up on an installment agreement.
Okay.
Okay. As long as you guys approve that.
So, what do we, we'll waive the late fees, is that, is that what we're saying?
The late fee is already closed on there. I mean, I can...
Yeah, I'm sorry, so just have to pay me in installments.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, right now, the back due is one twenty-four ninety-four. By the twenty-fifth, your fifty-eight, fifty-nine will be due.
But there won't be no more late fees, as long as it's up to date, right?
As long as he stays up to date with what's going on now.
And pays us in installments.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Joe, Amber Russo, Amber Russo. Joe?
Yeah. I was wondering, see, your line goes all the way over half of that street now. Because this guy puts his pants on a line. And I wonder, how can you possibly do that?
Well, according to Denny, we had, he had permission to go across his driveway. And Robert Smith was here at that time. And he said there was a line across the driveway.
Yeah, but he extended about six more feet.
It's about three feet more, and it only extends to the edge of my driveway.
I'm talking, boy.
I'm sorry. I won't talk anymore.
So, the dri- what the, what the question was about the line, was the fact that it came across the driveway, not down the street. Is that not right?
Yeah.
Are you asking me or Joe?
I'm, I'm just asking...
I found the minutes, and it was, when Powers asked about it, you stated that we would put a yellow line across the driveway.
That's what I read too.
But it's long forward on both sides.
Did anybody ever measure it?
Thirty feet long.
Thirty feet long. The law, the law allows eighteen feet.
The line's eight thirty feet, I measured it.
If you're on a, if you're on a state route, it goes a little bit more.
See, now, if you take one quarter, they have like three-quarters of that street, it's all yellow line now.
I see that.
I mean, you can't park nowhere.
Well, the, the permission was given for a line across the driveway. Not up the street. But across the driveway, right? So, the definition of the driveway is going to be you. I want you to look it up, find out what's going on. And I do know, I called the state, they said it was, that it was allowed eighteen-foot line.
Yeah, that's fair.
And if you're coming onto a state road, you can get permission to go a little bit further if you've got an angled road. A straight-in driveway is eighteen feet.
That's fair. I love that.
You good with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Do I get to say anything in reply when he's done?
Did you say that?
I didn't, but I, but it's about me, and I think I should be able to reply. If that's okay with Joe, it's okay with everybody. Okay. Uh, the, I, I didn't extend anything beyond the driveway that was there. If anything, it should be grandfathered in. That driveway's been there for a long time.
Well, you ain't been there many years anyway.
We've owned it for, uh, we've owned that driveway now for about a year and a half, and we've been using it regularly. We have cars inside there, we have trucks in the driveway. We've owned it for about a year and a half. We've owned it since longer than you've owned Sammy's there.
Let me tell you something.
And we try to take care of our property. Please don't interrupt me now if I'm talking. Um, I've been trying to be a good neighbor. I could, I have four vehicles that I keep, I keep all on my private property off the streets. There's three vehicles, two in that garage and one in the driveway. I could park them all legally on that street and take up all the space there. And I don't do it, because...
That's no problem with that.
Please don't speak when I'm speaking. I was very polite with you.
That's right.
I was, so please give me my turn.
Oh, you take your turn.
Okay. I've been very polite and very cooperative, and I don't park my trucks on the street anywhere to allow businesses and everyone to be able to use their space. Uh, I think my driveway was a certain width, even where the yellow line was painted, was probably a little more than eighteen feet already. I added about three and a half feet, maybe four.
Did you ask anybody before you added that?
I, I, I asked you in November eighth, I asked the mayor, and you said you would paint the line across my driveway. And no one ever did it.
That's right.
And so I finished it.
Your reply was, did you with...
Well, I did. And now I'm getting a hard time, because I finally did it.
Well, did you pay, take it further than it should have been?
No. I've gone exactly to the edges of my driveway, and I didn't go down the street. If you want to go out and look, I didn't go one inch past the width of my driveway. And I, I have vehicles using that whole driveway.
I hold stone into there.
But I can track trail in there.
Please, sir, it's not your turn.
I hold sand in there.
Call order.
Order.
And, and I, I'm done. I, I don't, I, I've, I've painted just what I was given permission for. You guys look up the law, we'll go from there. And I'm, I'm trying to be good neighbor, Joe. I want you to have a successful business there. I won't park my trucks in the street unless, what if I, I have to wash my driveway? I'll park them all in front of your store. And you can't say anything about that. It's free parking. So, I, I'm done. I don't want to cause any, any issues. I really thought I was doing the right thing, because you guys didn't paint it. I just painted what I thought I had permission for.
Your reply was, that I seen on the tape, was that I told you we couldn't get to it for approximately a month. And you said, I'll do it.
So, so, and so now I've done it, and so how is that now wrong?
Well, I didn't, I don't know where the line was to start with.
I know.
Well, that's why I asked, because it was three feet short of my driveway then. And that's why I asked then. It was three feet short of my driveway then. And I just painted the part that was done, that was for then. So, we can measure it, we can talk about that some more, but, uh, you know, I, I'll look it up too, because, you know, I think, having, it should be grandfathered in. You've grandfathered in liquor licenses. You've grandfathered in very serious things. The doghouse was, you've allowed them to have that, it's close to the church. You've allowed them to have that, because it's...
The liquor board allowed that.
The liquor board allowed, because it was grandfathered, because it's been there for a long time. And that's usually the way, so, so, I, I feel like I've been singled out, and you're treating me very unfairly. I don't park in front of other people's driveways. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at my property, I'm not, I'm not...
You're leaving my...
I'm, I'm really sorry about that, ma'am. I didn't mean that at all. I was just looking at my truck out there, that, you know...
The rake thing is the right thing.
Uh-huh, I agree.
My dad always said, rake's right, and rake don't wrong nobody.
So, does anyone park in front of the clinic's driveway, when they're, when they're there, and then they just move their cars if someone needs to move? Does anyone park in front of, of anyone else's driveways in town? And then you have to come out and ask them to move?
They park on Rick's all the time.
You know, they park in, but Rick's not there all the time. I'm, I'm here twenty-four seven. I live here. I'm the only one on this block that lives in the buildings here. And I have to, I get in and out twenty-four seven. So, it's not the same situation as a, as a... I'll, I'll stop, I'm done, I, I yield.
Now, let me show you something. You can use to park a car on this side of the street here.
Uh-huh.
All right, am I right?
At where now?
It's right here on the corner. You used to park a car there.
But the line doesn't go as far as it does on the other side.
You could park a car there legally before.
Only because they stole three feet of my driveway.
It wasn't even, your driveway is, the street's a street. It's the city, the street. It ain't your street. What you buy the street?
I'm, I'm not, I'm done, I'm done speaking.
Well, let me tell you something. You want to go?
I suppose that...
Hey. I'm just letting y'all know if there's any more disruption like that. Right there, read it for me. Disruption of government process. Let's not have this.
Now, Dale, you got something to say?
Sure do. I hold a stone in there for that driveway. I hold field dirt in there for that driveway. I hold stuff in there for Mickey Rocco. There's never been a line above that dip.
That's what I was...
I could, I could, I could go get Doc Ferguson right now, because he leveled the stone out. There's never been a line up there above that dip. And I backed in there fifty times.
And you can't now?
Well, Rob...
No, it's not, it's, that's, that's not it.
Just ask them.
Where, where I, no. I could back in there if I wanted to. I even parked there if I wanted to. Uh, there's no sense, we're in, we're in the city of Piedmont. There's no sense in this argument, this constant bicker trouble on Facebook.
Hey, hey.
Hey, Dale.
Take a break, buddy. Calm down.
But we need to stop it.
Well...
That's not, that's not just memes about it tonight.
Okay.
That's why the bickering on Facebook is, so they get replies, Dale. And I don't, so... Okay, uh, Clayton. You will call the state road.
Yes, sir.
Just like I did. They'll tell you eighteen feet.
That's eighteen feet.
Well, you make sure you get the confirmation from them.
Yes, sir.
And are you allowed to extend it any further? I do know that if you're on a state route, state road, with permission, you can. But I'm not up on the law. I ain't a cop. I don't deal with the law all the time. And to tell you to be on a street, I don't know where the line was, but I think, I'm pretty sure that it's just like it said, where the dip comes down like this, over to the other dip. And Robbie Smith has pictures of it.
Can I say one thing more, one more?
Yes.
It, it did go past the dip towards Sammy's. I didn't add any to that side. I only painted the unpainted type part on my side. It had been painted by the city before, that last little bit past the dip. I just wanted to add that little correction. And I can show you pictures too, that show that it's there.
Well, uh, Robbie's supposed to send some pictures, and if you want to send yours, huh?
Robbie should show that same thing, because I don't make stuff up. I, I do things with pictures, I just, I talk about what's true. I back up my facts with documents. I don't make things up. I don't slander people on Facebook. I only say what's true.
Okay. We'll see what goes on here, isn't it?
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Joe?
No, it's fine. I'm talking, that's fine.
Okay. Moving on to the, is there anybody else on the...
Nope, nobody else signed up.
Okay.
I'm here for my water bill. Like, if there's something about that, I don't know, I just...
You're supposed to come in and sign up on...
I did, I did sign up, though, this morning.
He made a, he filled out the form.
Oh, the form.
Yeah, he filled out the form, we forget, Longacre.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I did...
I can come back.
I was off today.
Oh, everybody else has got to turn, come on in.
I think she could pull it up.
What's your name?
Uh, I'm Brian Longacre.
Long?
Yeah, Longacre.
Okay.
I live at thirty-nine James Street. My water bill was like a hundred and sixty-some dollars, or I think it's a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty, so I came in here and I said that there was something wrong, because it's normally seventy dollars, and we determined there might be a leak. But I did find that leak.
Where's, where was the leak?
It was above my water heater.
And you're about, excuse me, sir?
No, in the bathroom. Uh, and I was just told to come here.
Did you get it finally fixed?
Yeah, we found it.
It is fixed?
Yeah.
Was it L and M?
No, it was, we had to find somebody else.
That's since last November.
The last right one.
Penalty charge.
Is yours usually a minimum bill?
Yeah, it's always like seven bucks.
The last one was a minimum, because that was when they estimated it, and he didn't have a reading. Okay, so it's up. Nine thousand five hundred and ten gallon, this, at this reading, which is like triple what it usually is. So, he took a lot of bads, I think.
Question, will you adjust his water bill for him?
It is fixed?
Yes, I hope so. We got it to come today.
Because you only get one in a year.
Yeah, that's what they told me.
You understand it?
Yeah.
And we can't adjust the whole amount, because it was inside the house.
Huh?
So, what's going to apply to him is what's applied to the other guy.
Yes, right, yes. But why have to bring it up at the next meeting, because it's not on the agenda, but...
So, I gotta come back here then?
You don't, no, you've already discussed it with us.
So, I've got a motion to adjust the bill.
We can't make a motion, it's not on the agenda, so...
I'm just gonna say this. The motion that Dawn made is not gonna be publicized right at this point, but next time, make sure that's on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda that we can vote to do that for him.
And, uh...
Did you say by percentage, Karen?
Yeah, I think that's the way you did it.
Okay.
Well, we have to be fair with everybody, so...
We just did Robert by percentage, so we'll do him by percentage.
Yeah.
Okay. You good with that?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, you won't, you won't have to step in. If they got a phone number or something for you, they can call you and tell you what to do.
Did you ever get ahold of your landlord?
Yeah, I got ahold of him. Uh, he had to call L M N. And then he called L M N, and then, uh, he came out and then checked it. He said it was the toilet, because I don't think it was the toilet, because whenever we were in the bathroom earlier today, I heard this like hissing noise, and it was, I pulled the black piece off above where the water heater is, and water was just spraying out at me from across the room. So then, I called them back, and then I asked them for, if they could find a different guy, because the other guy said he does not want to mess with my house, so I found somebody else. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, it's, they don't like my house.
Well, who was it was in here saying, you better be, oh, fancy...
Yeah, that can't be you.
Get somebody to bless that house.
Yeah.
Get some mojo in there.
Nobody left the house.
And don't hate the house.
Yeah, that's what she told me.
I try not to.
Got to love people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it'll be on the agenda next week.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on down, we've got minutes from the previous meetings. Everyone had a chance to come over there and see, uh, everybody look at the minutes.
I'll make a motion to supplement the...
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, well, except the minutes is written. Moving on down to correspondence. Paul, what do you got?
I have a letter from the state auditor. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter eleven, Article eight of the West Virginia Code, as amended to the state auditor of West Virginia hereby appreciate your levy estimate budget for this fiscal year, beginning July first, two thousand nine. I find that any levy rates will be imposed in excess of those prescribed by West Virginia Constitution, or were legally authorized by a vote of the people. With this written approval, the levying body shall meet on the third Tuesday in April, which is April sixteenth, to hear and consider any objection to officially, and officially adopted levy rates for property taxation. The clerk recording officer within three days of such meeting shall prepare and forward to the state auditor the officially adopted levy rates in lieu. So, we do have to come in on Tuesday the sixteenth to lay the levy. Is there a certain good time for anybody?
Well, Tuesday the sixteenth.
Who's next to you?
I don't know, it's at least three, so it has to be evening for me. Yeah, me too, on the sixteenth, because there's a chamber of commerce, no military development. Later, better, yeah.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock on April sixteenth, we'll meet here to lay the levy.
Okay. Eric, is that all you got? See? Dawn?
We doing reports now?
No, we're...
No correspondence? All right, I got a couple of things here. C T L started drilling today up on the road situation up in Pearl Street. They got down to fifty feet on one hole. And, uh, started drilling the second hole and broke a bit, they had to go to Morgantown and fix. When I came in, they were up there drilling again, so how far they got, I don't know.[1751.62] But anyhow, this is the thing that's needed. These core samples as to know how to fix that. Road where we're gonna have to do this every couple of years, such as in the past. Uh, and hopefully we can still get funding from the state to do it with that. That's up in the air, I don't know. Uh, I get promises on one thing and, uh. Then the other guy, uh, kind of rejects it, so. We're not really sure about where this is gonna go. It's looking good. But. Who knows? Uh, belt has not been paid yet. So. That's not a good thing either, so. We're, we're not responsible for these bills because it's been okayed by the governor's office. But, uh. And approved. So. Hopefully, we can get a, get down to where we got some core samples. Now, the slide out there, the slide was, that's coming along pretty good and, uh, there's been approval to do that pretty much. There's another guy within the, uh. Within the senate has to approve it. And I think he's gonna not have a problem with it. But, uh, they're gonna put sixty, sixty-five soldier pallets down through there. Drilling three foot holes. Uh. Three foot in diameter and every other hole have an I beam in it for fifty foot. Poured full of cement. It's gonna be a costly venture, so, you know, I'm not. Really saying that we're not gonna get the road fixed, but this is gonna be pouring a lot of money into that stabilization of that bank. And. The railroad is another problem, but that's here and there. We're getting along pretty good together anymore, but, uh. They also sent us a bill and it was supposed to go to the governor's office. And I called them, so they forwarded to the governor's office, whatever happens. That's who it goes. Next thing is, uh. The court of engineers is, uh. Trying to work out a position where they can develop Jennings Randolph Lake. Which is gonna be a real good thing for the whole mineral county, not just Piedmont, but, uh, Kaiser Elsal. And one of the first things gonna happen is the, is the, uh, road getting fixed, the connection between one thirty-five. Well, it's actually Route forty-six, West Virginia. Hopefully that happens. That's another thing that's up in the air.
Is that T L one in work?
Pretty bad.
Yeah, yeah, they need some work.
Well, you know, if they're gonna build a, if they're gonna develop that lake, they're gonna have to fix the road anyway, because the command said that's right. Okay, the. Next thing is that, uh, I suppose everybody's heard the news reports about, uh, the old A B L plant being sold to Northridge Grummet. That's another good thing. They're gonna develop it out a little bit further and add on five hundred more employees. Uh. You know, which is also in Mineral County. So, you know, things are looking up a little bit as far as that goes. Okay, the other thing I got here is. Let's see what I did with this. Is, uh. It's a bail bonder. Plaid group. Uh, this is an order filed, a petition to renew, uh, the authority to engage in bonding and criminal cases in the. Twenty-first judicial circuit court, district of Mineral County. And, uh, that was okay. I guess. Oh, yeah, it was filed. April third, two thousand and eighteen. And that's about all I have as far as. As far as correspondence goes. Okay. Moving right along, officers' reports. You got anything, Paul?
I wanna talk about the, uh. Upcoming cleanup day. I don't know whether I can do it here now.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Uh. Yeah, I wanna have another cleanup day in the peo, in the city here. But as I said before. We got a lot of cleaning up and fixing up that needs to be done in this town. In more ways than one. Uh, it's more than seven or eight people, which is all we had the last time. Can do. We need people to step up. And I thank you, Dale, for all you did and different ones. But, uh, we need more help. I'm asking for the people, people to step up, that love this town. Care about this town. To come out, show up. It's not cleanup day if it's only six or seven of us here. I mean, we get a lot of requests for. Uh, do this for me, do that for me, that's fine. But we need people to step up and come out and help us do what we need to do in this town and rebuild and make it better for all of us. Not just, there's more than just a handful, seven people live here. There's a bunch of us. That love this town and wanna see the best, like Dale was talking over here a few minutes ago. We love this town and we wanna see the best for this town, I do. I'm talking tearing buildings down. You know, it starts with people cleaning up their own areas. There's no reason for junk cars to be sitting around in people's yards. Or on the streets. People with the junk houses sitting up. All boarded up or whatever. It's been like that for twenty, thirty, forty years. The city and this handful of people, we can't do it all. You can't do it all when it comes to that. We can't just go out here and tear somebody's house down. People think you can, they think you got a fortune. You don't have it. It's a small town, small budget. We need the people of this town to step up. Clean your own areas, tear your houses down. Most of these people know who owns these homes here. These junk properties. With trees and weeds. Higher than your head. Do something about it. Do something about it. Clean your own areas. That's where it starts. But I'll be presenting something, my plan for the cleanup day. Very shortly. And, uh, but the first thing for me. I wanna see the people of this town step up or, or won't even have it, there's no reason even to have it. Not if it's only gonna be six of us, six or seven.
Can we still get them dumpsters?
Yeah, I'll hit you that guy from the D E P that I'm in contact with, and he said he could get us some dumpsters, if we give them enough time.
Okay, that'd be wonderful. But again, the people, we need the people of this town to step up. Clean your own areas. We can't, are not going on your prop, people's property. And clean up for you. These are things that you can do, be doing right now. Cutting trees, cutting the weeds. Uh, we got junk cars that are, that, that rotting, that have been laying around here, junking up the town. I'm a firm believer that nobody should be allowed to junk up the town, not one person. You live here, you should be a good steward, right? We should be good stewards for one another. That's an attitude change I was talking about before. Good stewards for one another. Uh, I clean my property up because I don't want you to have to look at that eyesore or anybody else. I'm responsible for my property, my area, and I clean it, maintain it. And we all do that. We can make this city really look nice. Right now, it looks like a bomb exploded. It's true, isn't it? In places, it looks like a bomb exploded here in this town, like something you see on TV. Uh. We have to change that. Tearing these old buildings down, most of the people here, you know who owns these buildings. If you don't want your property. Can't do anything with it, let us know or get ahold of some, do something. So we can be able to do something, get these properties tore down, get some of these places cleaned up, get your vehicles hauled out. But as far as putting all that on the city like the city can do, it just can't be. So I'm just asking, we start this new, this cleanup, that the people of this town step up. I come out here on Saturday morning, uh, the cleanup day will be on a Saturday, probably start a week ahead of time, will take a whole week. Or longer. Give this town and all the people here a chance to clean up your own properties, but you can start on that right now. And then that Saturday, we all get together and meet here. And finish the cleanup. Can't do it all in one day. It's a continuous process. This town didn't get like this overnight, it's been a, been a long. Process, hasn't it? We got to where we're at right now. But we can change it and begin to, or begin to change it at least. Get rid of these junk cars.
While you're talking about the junk cars. Place up there in Middle Ocean will come and buy them cars and haul them away.
Is that right?
He'll come and buy them and haul them away. He'll give you money for these junk cars.
Really?
See, the problem is. We have to get people that own these vehicles to allow them, allow that to be moved. Why do you, why do you wanna sit on a car that's been sitting in your yard for, for fifty years, junking up? I don't get that. But that's what we have. But I'll be putting out a plan for a cleanup day. Hopefully, I hope people contact me, hey, I'm interested, I'm all up on this cleanup day and show up. I was disappointed last time, again, boy, seven people there and most of them are sitting here at this table right now. Hardworking, honest people, sitting at this table. Uncle Harry, my uncle, Harry Coleman, who's ninety years old and he was there. Now surely the rest of us. Could show up. Clayton?
I'd play to be there this year.
Uh, you was there and Roger and Eve Green, I wanna give people credit that were there and that showed up. That showed up. And again, Dale, thank you for all that you did and Mike. We was able to get a house tore down up there.
Amen.
And we got a whole bunch more that need to come down. And we can do it, the city can do it, but the people of this town can do it. You know who owns these properties and you know. Who's junking up. We know that. So, that's all I have to say.
Good, thank you, Paul.
Dawn, you have anything?
Um, Paul. Why am I here?
I asked you for it.
No, that's not why. You asked me to show up tonight? To discuss? The nine forty-one? Right?
Yep.
Okay. So you want me to do that now while we're still returning?
It's part of your report, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Right here.
Um, he just wanted, I was explaining to him on the phone that we have a new caseworker for the back nine forty-one payments. Um, she is through Bridgeport, her name is Micah. Very nice woman, she stopped here, gave Phil her card and I was off that day. But, um. Because of the three payments that we did make. Um. It was down to. Thirty-eight thousand. Um, our old. Caseworker or whoever he was. Um, in Martinsburg dropped the ball with us. Because there was paper signed by Vicki for a direct debit every month until it was paid. They took it out for one month and that was it. So I made two more payments online. And then I tried to call him from November until she showed up a month ago. And he would not get back with me. I don't know whether he even still works for the IRS. But anyway, she, out of Micah's mouth, she said, no, he dropped the ball. Everything that basically I had to do, the balance sheet to see how much we could afford to pay, blah, 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 was like. Not even right, according to her. So, we had to send in twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. And that was done the third of, uh, March to the IRS to catch us up. Or they was gonna come back on the employees. Because that was the employee part of the nine forty-one that was never sent in. Um, so right now we owe a total of twenty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-five sixty. Of that, she said for me to write a letter trying to excuse the penalties. Because of the situation in this office, lack of record keeping. Lack of payments being made that checks were written out for, and I did that. So I talked to her the second of this month, which was last Tuesday. And she said the penalty release letter that I wrote up was accepted, that we would be getting. Numerous notices in the mail coming up with a corrected total with the penalties taken off. For the past. Well, since two thousand fifteen, up till the second quarter of two thousand seventeen. So that twenty-six thousand dollars is probably not even right, it'll be less that we owe. And right now, that's where we're at, just waiting for the notices to be. Coming in, to see how much exactly we owe still.
Okay, one other thing. Uh, I wanna add, I wanna commend Kerry.
Yeah, another Kerry.
And Phil. Because they, in my opinion, have done a remarkable job. Taking an antiquated system, booking system and all that was old and antiquated. And have been continuously working to improve that, developed a quick book system. And we're well on the way. Of really being organized. And you guys should be recognizing thanks for the hard work that you've done.
Thank you.
I agree.
I agree with it.
You were handed, you were handed this, we've taken that and tried to improve on that.
I see it as a shoebox.
From the shoebox system to, uh, something that's organized and that's what you've done.
Getting there, yes.
We're getting there.
Hopefully we'll take it a few more steps here shortly.
There you go. I mean, it doesn't happen overnight. You work on it, and that's what's happening.
This has been going on for almost two years, I've been here in July.
You made it, I've been in this seat just for a few months, but you made my job. And I still don't know all the job. You made it a lot easier for me, I'll give you that. Because of what you've done as far as the quick books and all that, you're so organized. And, uh, and making this city that much more efficient and organized, so.
Thank you, again.
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Dawn, do you have?
Yes, I've got one here, another water bill. Apparently, her water was shut off, right?
No.
No?
We went out, uh, well, actually, we didn't even get to out, uh, she came in, talked to Phil.
Did they catch me?
Yeah.
She just came in, tapped it down and said, I'm not paying this, and that's all she said.
And when we were out there, when we checked, when they were fixing the leak. She had a leak on her side of the meter. They had a nice hole opened up, they replaced a section of it. T I and I told her, you need to come in and request. An adjustment.
Where addresses it? Eight fifty-one East Hampshire Street?
Uh, that's almost out here at the end, into the town limits where the turnaround spot is there, town limits. They were pretty prompt when getting the leak fixed. It, it busted line out maybe two and a half foot away from the meter.
And all they pay is the water, they don't pay sewer or anything?
And there is no sewer out on that end.
But she needs to come in and request an adjustment on her.
Is the water system still on?
Yeah.
Yeah. I can go talk with her in the morning and try to explain to her again. Sounds to me like they're kinda, kinda set in their ways, but I'll try at night, I'll let them know I gotta shut it off.
Well, that's what you're gonna have to do.
You found to request an adjustment.
You know, we're gonna have to get a little bit more. Legitimate with some of these bills, you know, that's always behind. And, you know, we've.
Well, in their, their case, uh, by looking for.
She never was behind.
She was never behind.
No. Hers is always the same.
Well, you know, like you said, go talk to her then, see if she has a legitimate request or whatever and.
And Brian Longacre was never behind.
No.
Well, still yet, that's gonna have to be a percentage thing, just like everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't completely wipe out.
Right.
Now, theirs is, theirs was outside, right, their leak?
Yeah, underground.
Underground, that can be, that can be.
That can be totally.
Just tell her to come in and put a request in, and it will be fixed.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, Suzie?
Um, I just want, there's gonna be a bad building meeting on May the twenty-third at six o'clock, probably leaving. I sent out twenty-five letters to different properties, mostly the ones that were in, according to our survey, they weren't shaped. And I've had a couple responded back. But, um, we'll dress that as being.
Good. Paul?
The present time, the pool is being drained, Ernie and I was taking care of that, and they're gonna get it.
By tomorrow, we'll be, uh, spraying it down and washing it down with muretic acid.
And I have a lady that's donating paint to paint for buildings. So we're gonna try to get our buildings painted, still checking into the sidewalk. The next four fundraiser dinner will be this Sunday. From eleven, it sold out, we sold out in two hours last time, and after I made all my final deposits, the last dinner, we made eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars clear. And that was having seventy-five pound of meat, I ordered a hundred pound of meat for this dinner, so hopefully our profit will be closer to like a thousand or more. But that's Sunday, the twelfth or twelfth, or fourteen, and then I'm gonna have one on Mother's Day, May, May twelfth. And that'll be the three fundraisers I'm doing for.
Well, I'm going to be out of town on that Sunday, due to my sister's problems with her health, and, uh, I'm taking them to dinner and all that there. So I will do make a donation, but that's about where I'm gonna be unless things change.
That's all, I got twenty-seven orders for Sunday.
Is that all you got?
See, I just, I was just trying to tell people if they wanted a dinner Sunday, maybe try to call in advance, because we sold out in two hours last night.
Don't forget this paper.
You got paper here somewhere.
Well, I didn't sign up because I felt those things, you gotta tell them.
Ernie, well, we fixed two more leaks last week, um. One of the, one of the marbles, that was a major leak, uh, saddle was leaking, plus he had a hole was. Big roundness, three-quarter inch line, just spraying water everywhere. We fixed another one down here on Line Street. We have dropped our, uh, pump time from four to five hours to about three hours a day. We have Tim, Tim, Tim and I both got three hours a day now. So we were losing a lot of water, I showed Ben a picture of the ditch line here by the railroad track that was always full. After we fixed the raw water line, the one at Marbles, that ditch is pretty well dry. I will also have, uh, the raw water sewer circuit right around here on the eighteenth to camera a customer's sewer line. Hopefully, uh, that'll help us determine whose problem it really is.
Well, we know whose problem it is, we just gotta prove it, so.
And when he cameras it, that'll give us proof, who's, who, who's at fault. Other than that, I'm still waiting, waiting to hear from Region Eight, I J D State, on the other big list.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Clayton?
Well, month of April so far, it's a little slow, not much going on, but I'll tell you, March was one of our best months ever, ever, and Carrie can vouch for us, we kept her pretty busy. Citations.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had her on, on a roll, and it was a record month, citation wise and everything.
But I told you ten that weekend, you only gave me seven.
We had her perform on Lake and Four. But, um, covered even more narcotics, and getting more off, off the streets. People come in and start paying your citations ever since the letters and everything like that, that's been very effective, uh, we had people come in, what paid was like almost nine hundred dollars in one day. Various people coming in, we had, uh, was it two people also coming today?
They got their license, which is suspended.
Mm-hmm, so that's been very effective, and we expect even more results, everyone's just paying, coming in, doing all that, so, been, been very good recently for us.
Good.
It's all on my side.
When are you leaving for school?
Um, Sunday.
When?
Sunday.
Okay. Next thing up is meet and greet the candidates for the election coming up.
Actually, I just refigured, two years ago, we had a meet and greet the cand, well, I don't think it was two, four. It was four years ago. A meet and greet the candidates, so everybody can come out and meet and talk to the people, everything. I called Peanut over to, um, Midrise, and he said that we could use that, the hall over there, that's where we had it four years ago.
We don't have it there?
Over at the community room at the Midrise.
Oh, we got it at the Trinity Church.
Yeah, really, community room. The church.
Trinity Church.
Oh, was it? Well, I'm getting the community room at Midrise. He's gonna call, he's gonna let me know tomorrow to make sure, I'd like to have it next Wednesday at six o'clock, the seventeenth. He'll let me know if it's not available, but if it is available, that will be the big Wednesday, the seventeenth at six o'clock.
So we'll go on that.
And I would like, like I said, have all the candidates there, and maybe the poll workers can get to know the candidates. And maybe we can get the poll workers, they have to do their, their office. So. Get that taken care of.
Okay, the next thing there on the agenda isn't, uh. Isn't quite what it reads on there. Uh, the contact with the P S C on the water rate increase. This is not really per se a water rate increase. It's basically talking to them about a bond for the raw water line. In order to get a grant for the raw water line, we have to go through, uh, these guys from, uh, uh. Our attorneys, with the ones that we voted on, I can't think of what their name was, it's Steptoe and Johnson is part of their activity. But we have to go through the P S C in order to get a bond to put for the raw water line. Now, you have to kinda submit this kind of as a bond, whether it's a grant or whatever. So the P S C's gonna have a lot to say about it. It's not necessarily that this is gonna be a rate increase of any kind, I really don't want a rate increase. But if that's the only way we can get a new raw water line, it may have to happen, but that's gonna be a couple of years down the line anyhow, or a year. You know, our raw water line in this town, I've been preaching this for the past four years, that it's not in very good shape. And somewhere along the line, it's gonna have to be refurbished. And, uh, if we gotta bring water rates up two dollars a month to, or to two, two dollars to two fifty a month to get this raw water line in. Then that's what we may have to do, or whoever the decision is for me, uh, 'cause I'm not gonna be here for it. But I just hope that the work that I have performing on this raw water line doesn't just go by the wayside. I mean, it is, it is something that's necessary, if you don't have raw water, you don't have no water, and that's just the way it is. And, uh. Everyone that's been on some of these leaks can tell you what kinda shape these pipes are in. And when they get it, when you get over there in the mill yard, you got the railroad, you gotta contend with, you got the people with the mill to contend with, which, the mill people were always really helpful. The railroad are, are too, they send you a bill for it, we had a bill for, uh, twenty-eight hundred dollars fixing the last leak we had over there. And with the new water line, the way we was gonna route it, it wouldn't go across the railroad tracks, so we could eliminate that. But this isn't really quite the way it says that there's a rate increase, that's not what the thing was about. It's a possibility of a rate increase if we do have to get a bond for this instead of a, instead of a grant. The grant's still there, I mean, it's up in the air, whether we're gonna get it or not, but it's looking pretty decent. I don't know, it's just like everything else, you know, you don't know, till you get the bird in the hand, you don't know. So, that's what that was all about. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the city election.
The poll workers have all done their training. And Amanda Barnett is gonna be the one in charge of picking up the ballot book, and the, the resident book. Open election, the early voting is from April thirtieth to May tenth. And that will be the office, office where we're going at, so the books will be here for them. As I said, I believe that it was, I think, officers can, can take, be taking place as the new candidates might. The ballot has to be published on April seventeenth, just one time. And maybe if we get it in on the seventeenth, we can put that the last day to register is April twenty-second. Then the ballot has to again be published one time between May sixth and May twelfth, and the eleventh is the Saturday before the election, so that, that's probably on the eleventh. But there are copies of the sample ballots, have been put on the desk, and to explain what's going on with the ballots. Um, the Secretary of State told us, since we have two writing candidates for mayor, not on the ballot, there will be a paper on the check-in desk and one on the door. Does that suit your approval, Dan?
Can't say it for her.
The state's writing candidates for mayor, Dennis.
I have just one N in Dennison, that's all.
One N?
One N. And I'd rather it be Denny Powers on there, I'd rather it be Denny Powers on there.
Is that how you sign?
Really, what was that for?
Is that, is that how you?
As my official, I'm officially gonna be Denny Powers on the ballot.
Is that how you put it on the?
I did, I said, I, I'm signed my full name there, and then my name campaigning, Denny Powers.
Okay, so that's what you want.
That's what I would like on there, please, thank you.
All right. But that, that's gonna suit you on the door?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
That will be on the door and on the checkout. And as I asked the lady from the Secretary of State, if the poll workers ask who's running as a running, a writing candidate, no names will be, they will, to be told to refer to the. The door or the check-in desk. What else is going on? They told us to scan and send the, the ballot, 'cause it cannot be changed whatsoever. And it says on the bottom to not vote for more than four, but there's only three candidates. Paul Coleman never withdrew from being a candidate. We, we thought that he was a holdover because he took Vicki, Vicki Smith's spot, and she was supposed to be in there for the next two years. But Secretary of State told us that because he was, uh, appointed, and an election came before the, an expired term, he did have to get on the ballot. So he did not withdraw, he was not considered at first to be put on the ballot, 'cause we thought he was a holdover. But Secretary of State's office told us he had to be put on the ballot. So there's three names on the ballot for council, Don Beckner, Suzie Clark, and Paul Coleman.
And Paul went through the whole process of getting the signature and getting verified.
Yeah. Oh, we have, we have to have, oh, and we have to have, uh, Saturday, May fourth, on Saturday, we have to have, uh, early day in-person voting. So we have to have three people in the office from nine to five for that purpose.
Saturday is what?
May fourth. Because the ballots are not supposed to be in the hands of one person at any time, so if there's two people in here and one goes to the bathroom, there's got to be two people with the ballots. And nobody on the ballot or writing can be a part of that process.
Say, Ma, May the fourth way?
It's a Saturday.
I mean, what time?
Nine to five.
And that's just for early voting, or early walk-in?
Yeah, it's called early voting in person. Some people can't get off through the week to come in and vote, 'cause voting's on a Monday, so if we give them that Saturday. But people from the twenty-ninth up until May tenth can come in while you're working and vote.
Does it have to be the same three people, or like, can we have like three people for half the day, and then three people for the other?
As long as there's three, as long as the ballots are not left with one person at one time.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. You got something to say about the election?
Uh, I'll hold on a minute. I was gonna say something, but I'm just waiting.
I don't have that. I'll change that, get that.
Okay, which meeting? April twenty-fourth.
Time of the mission, yeah.
All in favor? And you wanna vote? We are adjourned.